Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming out tonight. A little bit of a game plan for this evening. The Licensing Board is going to take up its six or seven agenda items, which should just take a couple of minutes. We are going to call the Common Council Meeting to Order to recognize the 2019 Beautification Award winners. We'll recess the Council, hit Finance, and then come back to Council. So if you see a bunch of up and down and left and rights, that's why. But with that, I'd like to call the City of West Bend Licensing Board for Monday, August 19th, 29 to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with all energy and justice for all.
It's always nice having a full house say the pledge. Thank you. Item number one tonight's approval of the minutes of the Licensing Board's regular meeting from August 5th, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item number one, under Agenda Items for Consideration, is an original Class A Combination Liquor License for B&amp;H Mart Incorporated University Mobile located at 2333 West Washington Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item two is a temporary Class B Beer and Wine License for the American Legion Post 36 for the American Legion Car Show being held on the west side of the parking lot located at 2368 West Washington Street on August 28th, 2019, from 5:00 PM through 9:00 PM.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item three is a temporary Class B Beer License for Immaculate Conception Parish for a Fish Fry being held on October 25th, 2019, from 4:00 PM through 10:00 PM at Immaculate Conception Parish, 1610 Monroe Street in the Gymnasium Parish Center and Concessions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item four is a temporary Class B Beer License for St. Francis Cabrini Parish for St. Francis Cabrini Haiti Dinner on September 28th, 2019, from 4:30 PM through 9:00 PM at St. Francis Cabrini, 1025 South 7th Avenue, in the MCH Hall, Hallways, and the Kitchen.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item number five is approval of the operators licenses, and the list is in our packet.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. And item number six is a temporary operators license for Paul Moore.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, and that motion carries. Being no further business before the Licensing Board, I adjourn. The aldermen that are in the audience probably can stay there because we'll be calling you up in a second as I call the City of West Bend Common Council for August 19th, 2019 to Order, and recognize that we do have a quorum of aldermen here this evening. Jumping ahead to item number two is presentation of Mayor's 2019 Beautification Awards. So one by one, I'll call out the names of the winners, and if the aldermen in that district could come on up for a picture, that'd be great. From District Number One, Alderman John Butchlick. The winners are Bob and Lynn Feugie. District Number Three, Nancy Lutzschweiger. Alderman Andrew Chevalier. Nancy here tonight? There's Nancy. District Number Four, John and Elise Zarniak. And Alderman Chris Jenkins. Zarniaks are not here this evening, so unless you want a picture with me, Chris. District Number Five, Jenny and Brad Zubba. And there's Alderman Rich Caston. This mayor thing is good for wrinkles. I get to exercise my cheeks in smiling, so it shouldn't be no excuse for wrinkles. District, whatever, up to number six, Alderman Steve Hugaster, and the winner is Susan Miller. Steve, I was going to remember it. Mazur?
Mazur.
I knew it. Fifty-fifty chance. District Number Seven, Steve Mazur. And Alderman Justice Muddell. And District Number Eight, watch your toes. Here comes Alderman Roger Kissed. Nancy and Mark Went. I said a few quick words in the hallway, and I'll say even quicker words tonight, but thank you once again, not only to the Roots and Branches Organization, but to all of you, the judges, and certainly the winners this year. The pride of ownership really comes through in your homes. This is above and beyond. Everyone's expected to cut their grass and expected to, you know, pick up their yards, but you guys really go above and beyond and really make West Bend the community that it is. So thanks once again, and keep up the good work. And with that, we will recess the Common Council Meeting. Finance Committee. I'd like to call the August 19th Finance Committee to Order. We have five on the, I'm sorry, four items on the agenda. Item number two is the minutes of the July 15th meeting.
Motion approved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion carries. Item number three is a resolution authorizing the sale and appropriation of funds of fire department surplus equipment, the SCBA parts and radios. Presentation by Chief Kudak. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. Just so you know, I was a past winner of the Mayor's Beautification Awards, so just wanted to throw that out there. If you recall, in 2019, we were awarded CIP funding for the SCBAs. We sold the outdated SCBAs to a company for $3,000. We used that money to purchase pagers. That same company has offered us $1,500 for the facepieces and any extra parts that we would have had, so we'd like to sell those. We also got money in the 2019 CIP budget for radios. We found no vendor willing to purchase the old radios. We checked with any other city department. Nobody needed that, or they did take what they already needed. And we were offered $1,075 for those. So we'd like to use that extra $1,500 and that $1075 sale to purchase vehicle chargers for that new radio system. We did purchase chargers with the CIP money. However, they were of poor quality. It was kind of a shock to us, poor quality, and also the radio vendor. So they purchased them back from us at full value, and then we're going to go ahead and purchase the new vehicle chargers.
Thanks, Chief. Any comments or questions for Chief? If not, I entertain a motion on the item.
Motion approved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Item number four is a disallowance of a claim for Richard Creef. This is our standard denial, so that we can get the insurance companies to do their battle.
Motion to deny.
Have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
I can't read what his complaint was. You know, I have no idea what happened.
Yeah, it was difficult to read. So what I got out of it is that he was stopped at a traffic light. There was somebody that was doing, filling the road as part of the job, and then they were doing high-pressure washing, and some debris from that got up on his car and caused some damage, as the pictures show.
And was that the City of West Bend doing that work, or contractor, or the city?
I'm going to guess it was, based on the fact that our insurance company looked at it and found that we were, had done the investigation on it and issued the denial.
And do we know why they denied it? We never know the reasoning.
So generally, they do it if there's a, and Ian, maybe you can help with this one. It's when they were protected through our...
Well, it comes down to governmental immunity. Essentially, for routine actions, unless we have prior notice of an issue, there's no liability there for the, so if you hit a pothole, unless we knew about it and failed to fix it for six months, there's no liability associated with that for the municipality, just to protect against the myriad of things that go wrong in a municipality on a daily basis, unless we're negligent as part of this, and this was just kind of a freak accident that happened, no different than some of the other ones. I've seen manhole covers knocked off by plows and stuff like that, and it's just kind of routine happenstance, not negligence.
All right. Have a motion and a second on item. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign?
Aye.
Okay. So that is six-one. I'm sorry, five-one. And then item number five is a disallowance for the claim for Gregory Siriax.
Hey, Rich.
Yes.
I do want to just note on this one that this one is different than most of them, and that it's being denied because the insurance company found Mr. Siriax to be at fault for following the snowplow too closely.
Okay. Yep. Thanks for that clarification, Ian. Any comments or questions on this one? If not, I entertain a motion on denial.
Motion to deny.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion carries. And being no further business before the Finance Committee, I adjourn. One quick announcement is that we are planning a special Finance Committee meeting on September 16th at 6:00 PM to talk about some of the budget things that are going on that Jay and Carrie and team have been working on. So if you could get that on your calendars, September 16th at 6:00 PM here at Council Chambers. Thanks. Thanks, Rich. Adam and Denny, thank you. Like to reconvene the City of West Bend Common Council for Monday, August 19th, and move right to item number one, which is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of August 5th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Items three through nine are part of the consent agenda. We can take a motion on all of those at one time.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item 10, under Items for Consideration, is an ordinance to amend the 2020 Comprehensive Plan for the City of West Bend for a change in the recommended land use from single-family residential, business park, and open space to industrial for approximately 153.7 acres of land located on South River Road near the northeast quadrant of Highway NN and South River Road. A presentation tonight by business planner, James Ranky. Good evening, Jim.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we're asking the Council to amend our comprehensive plan. Originally, the comprehensive plan had this area slated for a single-family use. Over the years, the plans have changed for the use of the property. This property has recently been annexed into the city, so we're asking consideration tonight to change the recommended land use from the residential to industrial for proposed future development for an industrial park. The other item that's next on here goes hand-in-hand with this comprehensive plan change, and this would be to permanently zone that 157 acres that was just recently annexed into that to the M2 heavy industrial. So we're asking the Council tonight to consider the change for the comprehensive plan, and then also consideration for the permanent zoning.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions for Jim? This was recently in front of the Plan Commission, actually last week, Tuesday, I think it was.
Last week, Tuesday, correct.
And gained approval there and recommendation to this body.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. And item number 11 is an ordinance to permanently zone approximately 157.3 acres of land located on South River Road near the northeast quadrant of Highway NN and South River Road to M2 Heavy Industrial District.
Motion approved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Steve, if you could handle items 12 and 13, please, I'll abstain from discussing or voting on these items.
Item 12, ordinance to amend the 2020 Comprehensive Plan for the City of West Bend for a change in the recommended land use from multifamily residential to two-family residential for approximately 9.3 acres of land located at 113 Cedar Ridge Drive. Presentation by Jim Ranky. Good evening, Jim.
Good evening. Thank you. This is a consideration for a comprehensive plan change. The comprehensive plan had this slated for all multifamily use. We recently had a proposal for a change of use out there to incorporate some two-family duplex out there as part of the development for this. So what we're asking the Plan Committee or the Council tonight to do is to consider changing the comprehensive plan on the northern nine acres from the multifamily use to a two-family use in order to incorporate this change for the development proposal. The Plan Commission at its August 6th meeting recommended approval of the comprehensive plan change to the Common Council, so we're asking the Council to take action on that. The next item after this is the follow-up for the comprehensive plan to actually permanently zone that northern nine acres for that development of the two-family area on that nine acres, along with a planned unit development overlay in order to accommodate the mixed use of the two-family and the multifamily for that development.
Any questions for Jim? Mark?
Yeah. What's the difference between multifamily and two-family? Is there some reason you couldn't build a two-family home on a multifamily zone?
Yeah. The way our zoning is set up is that we have separate districts, so multifamily is anything that's three units or more versus two-family, which is actually two units. So that's the reason why we needed to change the, both the comprehensive plan and the zoning amendment for that area.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Are there any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, motion carries. Item 13, ordinance to rezone the northern portion of the property at 101 Cedar Ridge Drive, approximately 9.3 acres, from RM4 multifamily residential to RD2 two-family residential, and to add a PUD planned unit development overlay district over the entire property at 101 to 125 Cedar Ridge Drive to allow for approval of a site plan for the development of new two-family independent senior living homes by benevolent Corporation Cedar Community. And Jim, you already pretty much explained that.
Sure.
Does anybody have any questions regarding that one?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Thank you, Steve. Congratulations to Cedar Community. Item number 14 is appointment of Alderman Mark Allen to the Long Range Transportation Planning Committee to finish up the term of Alderman Justice Muddell.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item number 15 is appointment of Megan Kennedy to the Park and Recreation Commission, and I believe Megan is here tonight. Megan in the back? Hi, Megan.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Congratulations, Megan. Item number 16 is the appointment of Mary Ann...
Thank you. I get the same thing. Hit me with it. All right. Appointment of Mary Ann Juju Tech to the Board of Zoning Appeals to finish the term of Tom Bone. Now, there's a name, Tom Bone. We can get our arms around that. Appointment of Mary Ann.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Thank you, Mary Ann. We appreciate it. Item 17 is a discussion on support of further exploration of a downtown historic district. And we've got Economic Development Manager, Adam Gitter, here to fill us in. Good evening, Adam.
Good evening. The downtown bid had requested some information on what it would take for a historic district to be formed downtown and what that all means for building and business owners. And we'd been working for multiple months now, maybe six, with Dr. Dinah Penkis of the Wisconsin Historical Society, and she came in and gave a presentation to the bid last week, Monday. With that, she talked about historic tax credits being available to those businesses in the district. She outlined a district line, or she put a district lineup that is within the bid boundary, so it's not necessarily the bid boundary, as for continuity reasons. And it has a twofold play on economic development and potential tourism. We're still in the discovery phase of what this would all mean for businesses and building owners. So before we go any further and keep using resources to look into this, they voted to bring this to Council and ask your support on this, on further discovery.
Thank you. Any questions for Adam? I've got a couple, but if anyone else...
Sure. I guess you talked about further resources, so what sort of resources are they looking at from the city to help them in this?
My wage, I guess, is...
Okay. That's it? Okay. I didn't know if there's anything else beyond your blood, sweat, and tears.
No, no, nothing like that. But going down the line, there may be potential resources to hire someone to put in all of the paperwork to request being in a historic district.
Okay. Mark?
The boundary seems to zig and zag like a drunk on a Saturday night. It almost looks like a building got cut in half through this process, and there were some carve-outs that didn't make a lot of sense. Is there any reason it wasn't more contiguous?
Well, this was her attempt at contiguous. I guess what it comes down to is she couldn't cross through some buildings that would not have any, have lost all of their historical significance. So if we take the theater, for example, that theater is able to use tax credits on its own because not only for the building itself and the fact that it can go back to its original state, but also the historical significance it plays in the entertainment industry with West Bend. The district, buildings that otherwise wouldn't have that type of significance can still play into the broader picture as a whole and not need that much to hold that much of its form as it was in the past. I'm not sure that answered your question.
No.
Okay. We can keep going with this.
Some of the zigging and zagging avoids some of the residences. So if you look on the 7th Avenue where it kind of juts up and picks up the office building on the corner there of Elm and 7th, and then it cuts back down and avoids some residential buildings, and then cuts back up and picks up the commercial buildings there, and where it does cut through, that is, that's a little alleyway there. It's not actually cutting the building in two. So, over on Hickory there. So...
Anything else? Is there a risk to having residences in there if, you know, we've had homes in that area change over to, you know, some type of business operation? Is there a risk, as you define this geography a little more, that if it does square it off like Alderman Allen is discussing, is there some negative ramification to a homeowner if they happen to be in the historic district?
Not that I know of at this time. They're not making us change any code or ordinance that they're saying, but that's why we would keep digging in deeper and finding out exactly what they mean by that.
And something I brought up, I've got very limited experience in historic buildings, just enough to be maybe dangerous. And I was told by Jay that this was not the case, but by forming a historic district, if someone owns a building that doesn't want to make historic renovations, they want to make 2019 or 2020 renovations, they wouldn't be kept from doing that as long as they met current city code for building appearance and improvements. Is that...
That's correct. We asked that question about six times, just to be completely sure.
Does that make sense, Counselor? Go ahead, Jim.
I just add one thing. That's correct what Adam said, but in addition, that person wanting to make modern corrections, if they were, if they were looking to take advantage of the tax credit within the district, then they would be forced to follow the historic standards. But if they're just looking to make modifications and pay for it themselves without applying for either the state or the federal tax credit, then they'd be okay.
So really, isn't there any downside to a non, either nonhistoric building or someone wanting to do nonhistoric renovations? There's only upside for the folks that would want to consider that?
Yeah. I noticed in the presentation that's here that there was a 30-day period for the state to respond if somebody chose to take a historic... the state to respond if somebody chose to take a historic building and basically update it or gut it or tear it down. Is that to allow the city or the state to step in and take ownership of the property? Or what's, what's the purpose of the 30 days that they call out?
What they're saying that's for is to just properly document it in its current state before the demolition. Photos is really what it comes down to, but they can't stop you from doing that.
Okay.
Is it a suggestion or it's a requirement?
A requirement.
It's a 30-day window for raising only, she said, so it wasn't the significant remodel. It was raising a building. If there's a building to be raised, they're to be notified, and they have 30 days to come out and photograph it.
Got it. All right, and so you're asking for time to dot the i's, cross the t's, officially answer a lot of these questions.
Make sure that we know what we're doing.
Got it. Anyone like to, do we need a motion on this, or you went looking for a...
I'd move that we allow the Development Office to proceed with...
Research and development?
Research of the historic district.
Motion and second. Awesome. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Thanks, Adam. Item 18 is disallowance of a claim for Richard Creef.
Motion to deny. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Item 19, disallowance of a claim for Gregory Siriacs.
Motion to deny. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Items 20 and 21, we are postponing. The city is in discussions, and I believe positive discussions with the potential developer, and we expect to have some more information back to the city this week, I believe, in preparation for hopefully the next meeting. So we're juggling the timeline around a little bit, but we'll postpone those two items. Item 22 is a report by Alderman Jenkins regarding the Library Board.
All right. We had a special Library Board meeting last week to address the budget. I think it was, it was a pretty productive conversation. Jay was there, Rich was there, which we appreciate their attendance, too. A lot of good back-and-forth conversations, ideas that were sprouted out, so we are solidifying our approval of the budget at tomorrow's meeting. But in the interim, I believe Jay, if you, yep, Jay and Amy had met to kind of answer some of their questions that they had, so it's just a precursor to tomorrow's meeting, and then I'll let you know when that's done.
Thanks, Chris. Any questions for Chris? Item 23 is a report by Alderman Model regarding the downtown bid board meeting.
Yeah, I actually wasn't at this last meeting, but I did talk to Adam about it, and they kicked off the Downtown Entrepreneur Opportunity Program. Again, the marketing started on that, and they're accepting applications, and then they got updated on the Chalk Fest. Looks like they had like 21,000 visitors this year, so that improved even a little bit from last year, so that's about all I got, though.
Any questions for Justice? Item 24, report regarding the Deer Management Committee meeting. I assume that's you, John?
Yep. Yeah, we just had a discussion regarding Mr. Lovell and the USDA Wildlife Service. They're going to do a little, they're going to do a survey this year on the following parks to just check the deer population, and the parks that they're going to be going through first before we go into any other, other projects is going to be Park, Lachlan, Ridge Run Park, Bicentennial Park, Silverbrook Parkway, and then obviously Washington County property that they were at last year. There will be a service agreement coming through. We just went over it at the meeting, and it will be coming to the council at a later date. But at this time, we want to make sure that when we go into this, we're going into the parks with a great knowledge of exactly how many deer are out there, so they can come back and give us a good, good number again, because last year, we had a great, great outcome, and we want to make this a successful one again this year.
Thanks, John. I was lobbied by a couple of beautification award winners asking for reduction in the deer numbers, because it was difficult to beautify their homes with some of the hungry deer. Any questions for John? Item 25, a report by City Administrator Jay Chambeau regarding the Airport Commission meeting. Jay?
The Airport Commission met recently. They had two items of note to share. One was the budget for 2020. They reviewed that. And the second one was the Technical Advisory Committee, which you folks put in place a couple of months ago, just a heads up that that meeting was going to occur. It now has since occurred. The kickoff meeting for the Technical Advisory Committee was very productive last week. We held it over at the airport at the EAA building, and it was really just an update of what's going on to date with the study, and the environmental study is underway, so I can report that back to you all as well. It's in progress, and will probably take place throughout this fall, through the end of September, October. Once that's completed, we'll have another Technical Advisory Committee, probably early in the new year is what the Technical Advisory Committee members were informed, but we have a really good cross-section of folks that are serving on that committee, and it was a good information exchange. So I'm proud of, proud of the work that they did and the group that you folks put in place to lead that moving forward.
Thank you, Jay. Questions for Jay?
Item 26, report by, how about Alderman Caston? Getting lonely. Regarding the Plan Commission meeting. You're welcome, Chris.
Sure, so we had two meetings since our last Common Council meeting, the 6th and the 13th. A lot of the items you've already seen on the agenda here, so the zoning for Cedar, as well as the zoning for Renner. Those were both brought forth and passed by the Planning Commission. We looked at a couple of site plans. One was for Dr. Ellie Dowden on Main Street. She's redoing the facade and the outskirts of her practice on Main Street. And a site plan, a site plan for the Caracus Regner Park Baseball Diamond. We've got some fundraising that's going on right there, as well as some grant writing, and hopefully we'll be able to move forward on that. The site plan looks, looks really good so far. And then finally, we had some continued discussion about sheds and garages on corner lots, and, you know, where the Development Department would like to see some, some new rules around allowing or disallowing some of those auxiliary buildings on those corner lots, so.
Thank you, Rich. Question for Rich regarding Plan Commission. And item number 27, report by Alderman Model regarding the Community TV Committee meeting.
We actually had some confusion around the meeting times, so we forwarded all the agenda items onto the next meeting, so I'll get back to you tomorrow on that.
Any questions for Justice why that happened? Being there, no further business before the Common Council. I adjourn. Are there any announcements tonight? Have a great evening, everyone. It's a nice one out there. Good night.
That's it, man.